In the absence of a quorum of the members of the city council, the city clerk is calling to order the closed session meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. There is only one item scheduled to be heard at the closed session meeting to be held at 5:00 o'clock. That item concerns existing litigation titled UnderSeal versus UnderSeal. This item is going to be continued to the November 15th meeting. Seeing as there are no other items scheduled on the closed session meeting agenda tonight, the 5:00 closed session meeting will stand adjourned and the regular meeting scheduled to convene at 7:00 will proceed as normal.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville and the city council sitting as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. At this time, we'll have any announcements out of closed session?
The closed session item was continued to the next meeting. There was no discussion in closed session today.
Okay. We'll now move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Minister Robert Harper, Sr., from the Burning Bush Church, and Pledge of Allegiance by Explorer Leslie Flores.
Thank you. Let us have a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for your first thank you for forgiveness of our sins, Father God, by omission and commission. But now, Father God, for this council, we ask that you bless them, Father God, keep them in unity, Father God. Bless them with good health, prosperity, Father God. But now, Father God, those that are in attendance, we ask that you bless them, encourage them, Father God. Remind them, for this is a great city, Father God, that this is a city that will prosper, Father God, that will have development, Father God, and we say thank you. And as they leave this place, Father God, we thank you for giving them traveling grace, Father God, as you bless them and their families, Father God, with the same health and nourishment for their bodies and their souls. And in closing, Father God, we just say thank you again for unity upon this leadership that we have for the city of Victorville, and we thank you. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) America and City Republic for which we stand, one nation under God and individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to present a proclamation for Victorville Recycles Week. I'm not sure who's going to be accepting this. Oh, there it is. All right. You come on up. And although on the agenda it says we were going to be presenting the winners of recycling contests, that'll actually take place in December. Okay. So, on behalf of the city council and the city of Victorville, we'd like to present you with this proclamation in recognition of Victorville Recycles. Thank you.[541.82][541.82](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city council, for your support. My name is Dana Armstrong. I'm the Solid Waste Manager for the city of Victorville, and I'd like to introduce my colleague and counterpart at Bertec Waste Industry, Sharon Mitchell. She's the Recycling Coordinator, and she works up here in Victorville on various recycling projects in Victorville and some of the neighboring communities as well. And I just wanted to talk for a few minutes, there's a big house, so I won't take too much time, and just tell you about Victorville Recycles Week. We do this in order to call attention to the city's various recycling programs, and this is the fifth year that we've done it. To celebrate, this year, we have two main events going on. We have an open house at the Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility, that's this coming Saturday, from 8:00 to noon, and we're going to have tours of the facility. So if you've ever wondered where all the stuff that you put in that blue can ends up, this is your chance to go see. We're also going to offer free shredding, confidential shredding of residential documents at no charge to residents of the Victor Valley. Also, a free compost giveaway, free e-waste appliance, TV, and computer recycling, and we're going to have a booth with city recycling information and backyard composting information as well. And then, the other main thing that we're going to be doing for Recycling Week this year, as we have for the last four years, is we're sponsoring a contest amongst the local schools. This year, we have 12 schools participating. They're going to be competing for points. There's various assemblies, in-class presentations. Sharon's going to be very busy next week. Murph tours, also newspaper and CRV collection drives as a fundraiser, also a recycled sculpture and poster contest. And the schools that compete and do the best job, they will earn points, and those with the most points will win prizes between, the grand prize winner is $1,000, then the next is $500, and $250. There will also be prizes for the schools that collect the most CRV bottles and cans and newspapers. Our hauler, Victorville Disposal, is a major partner with the city of Victorville in these activities, and I'd like to thank them for their sponsorship, financial and through personnel assisting with these programs. So, I encourage everybody to come out to the Murph this Saturday. And in closing, I just want to say, I have a flyer about the event this Saturday out in the foyer, as well as another flyer about all the various great programs that the city of Victorville has to offer to its residents and businesses in the areas of recycling and waste reduction and community cleanup. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. All right. Next is a project very near and dear to my heart, and I'm excited to have Dwayne Baker from Sandbag here to give a brief overview of the La Masonas Quali Interchange Project and where that's going to be going over the next couple of years. I've told him not to give away too much because he's going to be making a more expanded presentation tomorrow at the Victorville Chamber of Commerce, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to give you just a brief update on some of the things that will be happening. Of note, I don't need to go over some of the details about the total cost of the project or about the need for the project in this community. The folks sitting here and watching you at home know about that more than I. But I would like to tell you about some progress that has been made, and that's coming up here, November 10th. The bids are due from the contracting community for this project. So, we hope that we will have very competitive bids. We hope that we're going to be able to save some money that we can use for other projects here in the area, but we're excited about that. We anticipate awarding the construction contract for this project at the Sandbag Board of Directors meeting on December 7th. So with that schedule, I'm giving the contractor some time to mobilize their forces. We should be seeing a groundbreaking ceremony for the La Masonas Quali Interchange in January. We haven't set a specific date yet, but it'll be sometime, hopefully, in early January, so we'll get that going. One of the other things I do want to talk about, though, is that we have a very active public outreach program that we're planning for this project. We're here this evening. We'll be at the Chamber of Commerce tomorrow morning. Then, we also have, we'll be scheduling an emergency responders meeting once the contractor is on board. This will be all the emergency responders and the school district to make sure that we're coordinating and making sure that we have as good an access as possible during the construction period. We then will be having some public open houses. Those have been scheduled. We have two scheduled, one on Thursday, December 1st, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mojave Vista Elementary School, and then a week later, on December 8th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Liberty Elementary School. So we've got the east and west sides of the I-15 to talk about the projects and what will be going on with those projects for them. We also have a way that people can stay informed of this project as construction begins and as we go through the construction process. We have a dedicated page on the Sandbag website, which is sandbag.ca.gov, and folks can go there under the Projects, under Interchanges. La Masonas Quali has its own page. There, you can sign up for email alerts, so anytime there's a significant change going on, if we have detours that are scheduled or any other significant project news, you can automatically get an email about that. Or you can sign up on Twitter for @SandbagNews and get the constant information about other projects that are going on. So we're excited. Bids are coming in next week. We should have, be able to award that contract and get this project moving. Again, thank you for all of your efforts and your help, and this has been a great collaboration. We hope to see a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Do we have any questions for Dwayne?
I have a question. Is there any local requirements to maybe perhaps use local contractors or materials and that sort of thing? I know it's going to take a lot of concrete. Are you reaching out to maybe the local cement companies?
We have a very extensive list of local contractors, not only for San Bernardino County, but also up here in the Victor Valley, and we're notifying that the bid was out. We've been encouraging our general contractors that are in the community to try to reach out and use local where we can. We do not have any requirements, though, in our contract that specifies that they have to use local vendors. As a matter of fact, because of the funds that we're using, we can't use those kinds of requirements.
I understand we still are under the prevailing wage requirement the state sets on all contracts like this. Everybody pretty much accepts the idea that prevailing wage adds anywhere from 15% to 20% onto the cost of a project, any place in the state, not just the Victor Valley. For our $60 million bridge, prevailing wage is probably adding an easy $10 million that we wouldn't normally have to. So, instead of 60 rounding off a number, without prevailing wage, we would have probably been paying 50 million today. That's a rule in the state legislature. They talk about things they can do to help us. That's one that they can change. This bridge is costing us all a lot of money, extra money that we wouldn't normally have to do. And like Mr. Cabral said, if we reach out to our local purveyors, at least we get some of that economy back into us, but it doesn't change the basic tenant that comes out of Sacramento.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. If we could have our Community Services Director, John Gargan, come up and give us a report on the Spice of Life?
Mayor, council, it's my pleasure to report that this year is the 10th annual Spice of Life Cultural Festival, and it was our most successful, and I believe the, not only operation-wise, but also financial-wise to date. The event was relocated to the Civic Center in 2009, so this was our third year here, and it's really helped us to become more efficient. As a matter of fact, we've been able to reduce our expenses by over $10,000 since in 2008. And a lot of that is due to the fact that public works, it's a lot easier for them in closing down Civic Drive than it was to close down 7th Street and to work with Caltrans and the access off of D Street. It's been more beneficial for the police department to be able to patrol. It doesn't require as much in regards to their participation. It's really helped them out as well. We've had over 12,000 participants this year, which was absolutely fantastic, and we sold every single vendor space. So we're already looking at ways to expand the footprint for next year to try to grow the vendor space. So like I said, it was, the weather cooperated this year, which is unusual for the first time probably in what, four or five years, Rudy, that it's been good weather for us. So, this was all accomplished, like I said, by the dedication of our partners and sponsors, both cash and in kind, and volunteers as well as city staff. And just to let you know that when we first started this out, the city's participation was not only in sweat equity, but also they gave $10,000 towards the event annually. And the goal was to eliminate the cash payout over time as it became more successful. That was whittled down to $5,000 in 2010, and this year, there was no financial contribution from the city to the Spice of Life. So, between the loss of that $5,000 from last year, as well as the $3,500 that came from the Bright Lights Program, we were down $8,500 right there in those two donations. And yet, as you can see by the spreadsheet that I provided you, it's, we right now, we were running at about a $15 loss over last year. Now, I'll put a little asterisk by that because there's still some invoices out pending, coming, I think, from the Daily Press and possibly from some of our media partners, but it shouldn't grow by another, more than another $400 or $500. So, and we started out with over a $13,000 reserve, so we'll have close to that again. We're ready for next year. Any questions, anybody?
I'll give you the $15, just so it comes out to be zero.
Okay. How about, once I get all the invoices in, maybe it's 500 or 600, you'll do that? If I may, I'd like to just take the time to recognize our sponsors, and I believe we have a few of them here. We have Jimmy Tisozian from Bertec is here. I was told that Mike Page is going to be here from, he's not here, okay. Is Andy S. Boygan from AMR, okay, he's here. And also, Sam Manuel Band of Mission Indians, okay. I would go ahead and list a few others. We had MetroPCS, Daily Press, Alaska USA Federal Credit Union, the Auto Parker Valley Center, State Farm Insurance, Eldorado Broadcasters, Desert Community Bank, San Joaquin Valley College, and Green De Bernardoski and Pentonia, Diamond Environmental Services, Bradley Mitchell Foundation, Southwest Gas, High Desert Primary Care, and the Victorville Walmart were all sponsors of this year's Spice of Life Cultural Festival. We also had a working committee that consisted of Mayor Protem Cabralis and his wife, Vicky, Liz Becerra, Juliet Cantrell, Willie Cockrell, Dave Coleman, Kim Culver, Matty Davis, Valerie Emick, Michael Harich, Karen Hunt, Angelique Johnson, Dwight Johnson, Hans Kim, Robert Enriquez, Maria Martinez, Connor Morris, Sohael Patel, Louis Rodriguez, Glensalis, Vince Sapina, Bill Snediger, Lutania Watson, and I want to make a special recognition to the glue that held everything together, and that is one of my staff members, Becky Wasserman. So, it was her first year working on it, and she jumped in with both feet and did a fantastic job and really made things run smooth. Also, at this time, Mayor, if you'd come down, I have some certificates for our volunteers. And if members of the groups, as we call them out, could come up and receive these certificates, I would appreciate it. It was great help. These people all came and worked. Like I said, they're all volunteers, and this is another reason why it was a financial success, because we had these people helping us out and really making an effort to make this a community project. So, if I may, let's see, please, the history of police explorers? Victorville Police Explorers? San Bernardino County Fire Explorers? Is anyone here from the Victor Valley High School Key Club? If not, I'd like to have Lovella Sullivan, who is the president of the Victorville Quanus, come down and receive this. And lastly, the Victor Valley Rescue Mission? Thank you very much, and I just want to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to be chair of the Spice of Life, and we look forward to another successful year upcoming. Thank you very much.
John, I think it'd be important to mention your partner with the city of Victorville, the partnership that we have.
And the partners are also the High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as Charter Communications, and we look forward to anybody who would be interested to contact us, because we can always use more partners to help make this thing grow and be bigger and a greater asset to the community. Thank you.
I would just like to thank all our volunteers. As John mentioned, without your support and help, this event would not be successful. So, once again, I know we've worked together side by side for, at least with the mission for a couple of years now, but the exploit for several years, and then our other volunteers. I would just like to thank you once again for your support and for helping the city promote this event. Thank you very much.
Okay. And now we have a special presentation from Nancy Jackson from Southern California Edison regarding their 125th anniversary. Nancy?
Mayor McCackren and wonderful council. It's my privilege to be here, and I think we're going to try to get, we had a CD to show the council with regard to, we're celebrating our 125th anniversary at Edison International, and on behalf of Southern California Edison, we have a resolution we'd like to give to you, so come on down. I was stating, Southern California Edison, Edison International, is celebrating 125 years of marvelous service to the state of California and Southern California. And we're so proud to be able to serve our communities. And on behalf of our chairman of the board and our CEO, who is Ted Craver, and our president, Ron Lessinger, and all the board of directors from Southern California Edison, we'd like to give you a resolution. You always give resolutions, and to others, very deserving folks in the community, and we would like to say, we'd give you a resolution of appreciation from Southern California Edison for all the fine work that you do with us as we celebrate our 125th anniversary. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate you.
Do we have the video?
My apologies to Nancy Jackson and S.C.E.R. DVD player in the back. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. It worked when you first got here and just decided it didn't want to right now. Apologize for that.
Well, thank you, Nancy. On behalf of the city and the city council, we appreciate this recognition and look forward to working with you for another 125 years. Thank you. All right. This time, we'll have the city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The city council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record. and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. The revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda, there is just one, there is on the dais for the council, a letter from Joe Brady, CEO of the Bradco Companies, requesting to have his comments entered into the record during the public comment period. And those are all the revisions I have, Mayor McCackren.
Thank you. Before we get into public comment tonight, I'd just like to make a few comments. I'd like to take the opportunity to apologize to the city council members and the public for losing my temper at the last city council meeting. I understand that we all want what is best for the city, and I understand that as an incumbent, incumbent on my position that I never personalize ideas or opinions regardless of whether they are helpful or misguided while residing in this post. To you, Mr. Mueller, I would also like to apologize for interrupting your presentation during public comment and calling you a liar. I personalized what I was hearing from you when I shouldn't have done so. And after reflection, I understand you have a job to do, as do I, and that you are simply doing that job to the best of your abilities, and I must do the same. What I will not apologize for, never, is my passion for doing what is right for this city. I have accepted and excelled at every available position to lead, from president of the Victorville Rotary Club to chairman of the Victorville Planning Commission and chairman of the board of the Victorville Chamber of Commerce, to name a few. I've served this community at the sacrifice of my business and my family because I care. I prepared myself thoroughly for the privilege of serving the citizens of this city, and I have unparalleled understanding of the issues facing us going forward. When I was first elected, many of my colleagues in the business community, who I recognize here tonight, asked me, "Why in the world would you want to clean up the mess that John Roberts has made of this city?" My answer then was, "Because I am capable." Sitting here before you today, I can honestly say that I am more focused than before on continuing this path to a better future for this city. It's easy to lose focus on all that is right with the city when one comes to a council meeting, but there is, and nothing, they hear nothing but what's going wrong with this city. SCLA is fully leased, Dr. Pepper Snapple's continuing to add jobs every month and serves as a beacon, drawing interest to other beverage manufacturers throughout the nation. Foxborough is adding Arm &amp; Hammer in the months ahead. As you heard tonight, the La Mason and Misswally Interchange is going to be built, providing the much-needed east-west traffic outlet. And in general, businesses around this community are seeing a sign of life. Mind you all, the first signs of life since the world ended in October of 2008. The truth of the matter is that the mistakes this city made during the years of robust growth are over and done with. And while some issues pertaining to those mistakes still must be mitigated by staff as we go forward, the city of Victorville's well-educated and seasoned staff are more than capable to handle those challenges with a fresh focus on what Victorville needs to be in the future. In closing, it's also important to remember that form of government is a component of the substance of government. The city of Victorville is run by a city manager as the CEO. We, as council members, are the board of directors of that CEO. Nothing more, nothing less. Our job is to provide direction and oversight. Whereas the city has been led astray by a past CEO, we, as council members, have made a very good decision in our present CEO. From here on, our most important job is to ensure he is able to remain on the proper track and provide him with the support and suggestions to keep the recovery moving. We can do this, and the city can be the city we all want it to be in the future. Thank you for your indulgence on that. We will now move into public comment. The first card I have is Ron Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I just had two comments, and it doesn't really have anything to do with the agenda coming forward. First, on behalf of Victor Valley Rescue Mission, we just want to say thank you for allowing this opportunity to serve at the Spice of Life event the last couple of years and look forward to next year's event. I think it speaks volumes to the community that the city trusts our organization and that we can be there to support our cities, which was what we'd like to do. Secondly, hopefully you've received a letter from our organization about our Thanksgiving banquet and invitation to come serve the community. And I just, if you hadn't received that, I apologize. I believe we mailed them out. But I just wanted to extend an invitation. We're gonna serve about 1,000 people on the 23rd of November. So, please come, feel free to come see what we're doing at the mission. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I did get your letter, and I will be there.
Oh, great, thank you, Mayor. And excuse us while half the audience leaves right now.
No problem. Thank you all for being here. Randall Masaro?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Randall Masaro, I'm a resident here in Victorville. For those of you that have never seen me or don't know me, I'm also an animal rights activist. I'm a former Greenpeace representative, and I'm also number 10 in charge in the world for union members for preservation of wildlife. The reason why I'm here is I read an article in the paper that some of you are maybe considering moving on to bigger and better positions or political aspirations. I just want to let you know that I was raised, never forget who you are, what you are, and where you came from, but never forget who got you there. And the thing is, as being an animal rights activist, I was just on TV in Glendale with the coyotes, saving the coyotes in Glendale in a van at home. I was also on TV again in Big Bear over the fish and game, cutting off a bear's head, foot, and paw because he ate somebody's koi fish. I was just on TV up in Reno. I was just with Michael Blake, and I just finished my first movie in Dances with Wolves, Michael Blake from Dances with Wolves. I was just with him. I'd like to ask you, I'm gonna give you my card, and we're gonna extend an invitation for each and every one of you if you're thinking about moving on to other bigger positions. We just set up a meeting with Congressman Howard Buck McKeon's top person here in Victorville. Also, Assemblyman Steve Knight is gonna be joining us. And I also have a TV series coming down to join us on November 17th here in Victorville at the chambers. And we're gonna have a meeting, a roundtable meeting. I'm bringing in former V L M agents turned whistleblowers along with other people regarding wildlife. As you know, there's a lot of money being spent killing our wildlife, $100 million to round up the wild horses and birds and send them off to the slaughterhouses. Here in San Bernardino County, they spend $70,000 taxpayer dollars to kill mountain lions, coyotes, and bears. This is an insult to Canadian and Native American Indian tribes. I'm not Native American, I'm Italian Sicilian, but they've trusted me ever since 1972, when I first became an activist. I'm extending an invitation to each and every one of you to please, if you'd like to RSVP and let me know if you'd like to come to the meeting and sit at the roundtable with the people coming in from Reno, the Santa Barbara TV series, people coming in from Vegas, from San Diego, because it does involve San Bernardino County, since we're the biggest county in the world. And our taxpayer dollars are being spent foolishly, unwisely, by congressmen, senators, assemblymen, and our representatives. Remember, we put you in office to represent you, to represent us, our best interests, but also, the wildlife matters. I want wildlife for my kids and grandkids. And the fact is, we're slaughtering them, whether it's bears, mountain lions, coyotes, wolves. They started hunting the grizzly bears in Yellowstone. They also started hunting the bison again. And they slaughtered 1,100 deer in Oakland, Santa Rosa Island, at the taxpayers' cost of $320,000 taxpayer dollars. So, just think about it. So, when you do decide to go ahead and be a congressman or congresswoman, please think about me, and you can go to my webpage, wildlifekeepers.org, and you're gonna find out the truth. But if you want to know where the taxpayer dollars are going, and we've been going to all these federal court hearings now, and we're taking on the government. I'd like to give you my card, and for anybody else that's interested in joining us, you're talking about hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars to kill the wildlife, but they're cutting Social Security, cutting Medicare, cutting senior benefits, cutting VA benefits, cutting welfare, going all the way down the line, cutting education. But you, as congressmen or congresswomen and the leaders of our community, you guys can step up to the plate and change the laws, and I thank you. I'm Randy Masaro, former Greenpeace representative, and now with Union Members for Preservation of Wildlife. I'd like to give you my card. Thank you.
Irene Carrillo?
Good morning, Mayor, City of California. I have an issue with Scoton Porstman since 2008.
You pulled the microphone, yeah, thanks.
Okay. I have an issue with Scoton Porstman since 2008 regarding her property on the corner of Rodeo and Johnson Road, where they're gonna build a church. There's a pastor that's burying concrete. I have called the Scoton Porstman many times, and I know Mr. Cabrera is intervening because he knows the pastor. The pastor even told me that he could do anything, that they will not do anything to him because Rudy Cabrera is intervening. Yesterday, on Sunday, I called the police. I wanted an incident report, which I have it here. And this is the article that came when I reported in 2008. Since then, I've been calling, and I have some video in my pocket. You would like to see it, you're more than glad. I have been calling and calling. The pastor has been over to my house. He told me that Rudy would do anything for him.
Okay, well, I would like to direct you to Chris Portrert, I believe is here. He's in the back, he's our assistant, or city planner.
Do I give him this?
Yes, and he can talk with you about...
Excuse, do I give him other information?
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Greiner?
Good evening. My name's David Greiner. May it please this council. Standing before you tonight, I see five of my friends. From chamber events to charity, we've been together at one time or another, and my respect for the five of you is monumental. Well, four of you. I don't know where Jim is. You all have endured strife and challenges leading to this moment. And as friends, I thought I would provide my story to see if there's anything of value you could take from my speech. Through these extremely difficult last five years, I've asked advice from every business leader that I could get in front of, and my story is compiled of the advice they've given me. Let me start by stating, I have no political agenda, or any agenda for that matter. I don't vote in Victorville. And I believe that all of you are more than capable in your oversight responsibilities without my interference. What I came to tell you about is what I personally did when hope seemed distant and solutions too far from reach. Business had slipped significantly going into the end of 2008, and I remained naively standing firm by the notion that recessions only last 12 to 18 months. Boy, was I wrong. The credit markets froze, and my company's major source for car loans ceased to make any loans due to a lack of funding regardless of credit. Then, the company that financed our inventory decided to attempt to make our company pay down the balances of non-aged, non-distressed inventory. Our company was getting squeezed on both ends. And demand for new and used vehicles began to fall. It fell to 50% of the 2006 peak. To make matters worse, the manufacturer of our products became bankrupt, and our company was left with uncertainty everywhere. There was nowhere to turn. My first order of business was to throw up. And believe me, that wasn't the last time. I got used to doing it three times a week between midnight and 3:00 in the morning. My next favorite action was to lay in the fetal position in my bed and drift in and out of sleep. Paralyzed by fear, this seemed like a plausible course of action. You see, I came home to the High Desert in 2003 to help my father, but by the time of the Great Recession, he had begun to show his age and was severely impaired. There was no one to turn to. I was responsible for feeding my mother, my father, my wife, and two children, one only months old. Being the tough guy that I aspired to be, I felt it was incumbent to be a pillar of strength for my family and never show weakness to them. I was on an island. The next order was to cut employees, which today is one of the most difficult decisions I ever had to make. I knew that 65 more jobs were at stake if I didn't eliminate 20. With everyone's wages deteriorated from the recession, I knew morale would suffer with the layoffs, but it had to be done. So, now I'm sitting with 65 people who had to do double the work for less money. This was a difficult spot. It became imperative to never show weakness in the form of lack of solidarity in the organization or weakness in my resolve. I had to create the appearance that everything was right on target. And to achieve this end, I created a cause for my people and praised them for every sacrifice they had made. I made a big deal about every win by an employee and praised them for leading the charge. I made them promise loyalty, and I pledged to do the same. I promised that the ship wouldn't sink without me on it and that together we could handle any challenge, even though I didn't believe it. The next order was revenue. We completely changed our focus on how we sold. We earned people's business by putting their needs first. From free repairs to no-profit deals, we gained share every way possible. This was also difficult, because at times it felt like there was no reward in working so hard. Most employees who didn't meet their quotas had to have their income supplemented by the company so they could meet their obligations. Pride in our cause was the sole reward I could offer the personnel. The revenue we had to target was 18 to 24 months out. I knew no one else would do that, and that was somewhere we could excel. Were there times when the employees would come out of the euphoria of the cause and wonder why they stuck with us? Yes. Were there times I wanted to blame the employees, the banks, the manufacturer, and the economy? Yes, there were plenty. I didn't have that luxury, there was too much at stake. I had to stand tall and be counted, and I could never submit to my circumstances or lash out. Everyone in my little world was looking at me. Right or wrong, we stayed the course, and better for the customer, better for our staff, something had to give. Today, I'm proud to say, things are going fine, and the future seems much brighter. I feel like a stronger leader for never succumbing and motivating those around me to succeed when there was no financial benefit for them to do so. I want to tell you all, you are all very blessed in three major ways. You have an extraordinarily talented staff and city manager and assistant city manager at your disposal. I believe if you sent out a job listing and waited 10 years, it would be hard to replace them with a better individual for a job. I believe this is a competitive advantage. I believe you have massive potential in your ability to draw manufacturing and aviation jobs at SCLA. It's fully leased, and the demand for space is furious. It would take another city 20 years to catch up to where you're at. This is a competitive advantage. And I believe you have inexpensive land and less restrictive environmental regulations. Nowhere in California can projects target such a competitive cost advantages in these areas. I believe this is a competitive advantage. With your laser focus, you can block out the noise and hone in on the city's one path to prosperity. You all are so fortunate as council members to have five passionate people as other council members. You also are very, very lucky to have well-informed constituents that attend your meetings. Use those resources to lead and generate information so you can come to your own conclusions. I believe you all are fortunate to have Mr. Mueller, who's willing to perform immense amounts of research on his free time and bring those items in front of you free of charge. It's as if you have a sixth councilman that is willing to spend the time to bring the items up that may or may not have been missed. Use his efforts, come to your own conclusions. May God bless the five of you in your journey. It is an economic fact that business cannot build where government cannot function. From infrastructure to quick and clear direction to staff regarding permitting and use issues, your clear and unwavering direction can create a thriving business environment. I wish for all of your sakes that the mistakes that predate the majority of your tenure were never made. But I don't think it's important how we got here. Rather, it's important how you five strong leaders structure this city's value proposition to the residents and the businesses in the future. You have the resources. Use your talents to motivate, appreciate, and build the brilliance of the city. You can do it. The 65 families in our small business are counting on you. We believe in you.
Thank you. David Mueller? David Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do accept your apology. And thank you, Mr. Greiner. I actually was going to speak on something else, but I wanted to address the spice of life issue. I'm, I'm all about cultural diversity. It's an important thing because we're a diverse nation, and I don't have a problem with that. The reason I bring these issues up is I want you to be aware of things maybe you aren't aware of. And some of the research I did, the, the, I, I was wondering if you were aware that the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is a private nonprofit, 501(c)(6), and that, that was funded by membership dues and three annual fundraisers. It is not a part of any government entity, and the High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Foundation, which is similar to Bear's, is an IRS-designated 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The reason I bring this up is I'm wondering why Bear's Foundation is being used to provide funding or pass-throughs, as Mr. Gargan said at the last meeting, considering the foundation-formed, Hispanic Foundation formed in 2009 and reported revenue from three sources, which are a citizens class, citizenship class for $4,000, Dancing with the Stars for $1,220, and Cinco de Mayo for $1,000. That total is $6,220 for the year. The High Desert Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, through spice of life, does not promote what the IRS defines as a (c)(6) exemption. Read the definition provided by the IRS online. Gross receipts for 2009 were $114,403 listed under fundraising events. That's under the, the (c)(3), or I'm sorry, the (c)(6) foundation. That's a lot of money, and nothing, none of it was itemized as to what provided the revenue, and zero expenses were listed. I'm, I'm referring to their 990s that they file. It's online, anybody can look at them. The 990 never mentioned spice of life anywhere in the Hispanic filing, Chamber filing. Also, since they're, they're not listed anywhere in the filing, let the check, the checks for the vendors were instructed to be made out to the Chamber of, High Desert Hispanic Chamber for spice of life. Why are two different 501(c)(3) organizations, or (c)(6) organizations, a (c)(6) and a (c)(3), involved with one charged expenses and the other claiming revenue? In other words, the, the Bear's Foundation's paying in a pass-through, the other Foundation's not claiming any expenses but taking the proceeds from the vendors? I think that's something that needs to be looked into, and considering it should be itemized. And I know Rudy, you're probably wanting to call me something again, but I'm just asking for an explanation. And I think the public would like to know because the parks are going to be closed potentially, and I think that you should clear that up. And I guess, I think you need to, you know, you need to kind of roll that around, that marvel around in your skulls and think about that. What, what's the answer on that? Why do they have $144,000 from fundraising events and do not mention spice of life anywhere in their filings? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Raymond Herrera. We the People, California's Crusader, I am the president and founder. I too am here about the spice of tribes. It has nothing to do with life in America. It has to do everything with diversity, divisive attitudes that are perpetrated by this party politics or members of this party politic, Mayor Pro Tem Cabralas. Let's celebrate the American creed. Let's celebrate who we are, the American people. And let's have you, Mayor, and the City Council, this party politic sponsor of Raymond Herrera's event. And I'll make you some money that you can use on parks and recreation. Mayor Pro Tem Rudy, you thank someone for helping the city of Victorville. 12,000 attended the spice of life. $15 negative, it's a profit. You can get the Victor Valley High School cheerleaders that have car wash and donate more than $12 to the event sponsored by this party politic for thousands of dollars that were spent by Mrs. Cabralas. A car wash would mention at least $200, Mayor. Without paying for a $10,000 stage, that's what was, that's one of the expenditures. You got the Vergrims, one block away, it's got numerous stages. You could have rented that whole thing for $10,000 and saved yourself with, you know, using taxpayers' property civic center, emergency personnel, fire trucks, police. But you had 12,000 people attend the event. It's like 12,000 people walking into State of the Brothers, and State of the Brothers lost $15, and you say it was successful. Successful and what, spending the taxpayer's dollar in one form or another, consideration that was offered by this party politic. And we had the children in Victorville came and go swimming or playing in their parks. I'm telling you, Rudy, a car wash would make you $200. But, you know, sponsor America. Sponsor an event that sponsors the American creed and guarantee that I would charge a dollar per person that's $12,000. I would ask every vendor to buy space to donate to their profits to the parks and recreation. But as you know, the city of Victorville is under a shroud of corruption. You know, you're being investigated by the grand jury, now the FBI. And I find it kind of funny, but the Hispanic High Desert Chamber of Commerce is always involved in the events and the newspapers sponsored by this party politic. And I asked many times ago that I want accountability. I want to know how much money you did spend in considerations. I want to know about the collusion between handshakes and deals that put this city into bankruptcy. I want to know about the collusion of Cabralas and his wife. And why is it that there's no profits made? 12,000 people showed up, popcorn, soda, everything is sold. And anyway, a car wash would get you $200 for parks and recreation. Go place.
I'm Robin Bitson, and I too am with We the People, California's Crusader. And I'm just going to camp off on what the last two gentlemen spoke about. But I would just like you to know, when I first looked at the income sheets, I was really perplexed. I thought, am I a dummy? I'm looking at these pages of vendors spending thousands, $10,000, and there's a net negative of $15. Just as the last two gentlemen said, I think that the books really need to be, got, gone over thoroughly from this event. Everything laid out where money went. And the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, once again, is in the middle of this. And also, like as Mr. Herrera said, I'd like to ask Mr. Gargan, where's your spice of American event? What about staging that next year rather than diversity and multiculturalism? We've done that for 10 years. I believe you said, why not the 11th year, an all-American founding father celebration? And again, I, I still don't see where it adds up, all this money that was expended, and we're at negative 15. The books need to be looked at. Thank you.
Mayor McCaffrey, Mayor Pro Tem Cabralas, and members of the council. Good evening. Dale Marsden, Superintendent Victor Elementary School District. Just want to put something on your radar that you may not have, and that's an event that we kicked off August 8th called STEAM 2020. Mr. Greiner mentioned a moment ago the competitive advantages we have and a laser-like focus, and that's really what this action started out as. Starting on August 8th, we called together Mayor McCaffrey, City Manager Doug Robertson, Assemblyman Knight, Senator Runner's office, Dr. Thomas from the county superintendent of schools, our superintendents in the local high desert mountain regions, Elvin Moeman from the high school district, Tom Hoagerman from Apple Valley, Joe Brady, you know, from the community, Robert Lovinggood, you know, from the community, our college president, Chris O'Hern was in this meeting with us August 8th, Michelle Spears from our chamber, Stephen Wangard from the Daily Press. Many of our community members and leaders came together in a call to action where imagine the High Desert where every child, an adult, who doesn't yet have their high school diploma, but child receives their high school diploma concurrently with their community college degree and/or technical or vocational equivalent certificate in a science, technology, engineering, arts, or math field. Just imagine the economic implications when that's achieved. It's enormous. I sit on the Alliance for Education for the county. I've been charged by Dr. Thomas to work with the desert mountain region, which is effectively half of the districts in our county, to align efforts around science, technology, engineering, and math. And so this goal, STEAM 2020, will achieve that. And some of the things that are going on, I've met with or spoken in front of over now about 300 people since our initial meeting August 8th. I've talked to people ranging from our Lieutenant Governor of California and a personal dialogue all the way to folks from our Marine Corps logistics base. Colonel Ormer came recently to a Rotary presented with our mayor and our city manager and others. And, you know, he said something. He said, we need in the military a rapidly reconfigurable, better, faster, cheaper, safer, multi-skilled workforce. And then one of our gentlemen here, CEO at Exquadrum, he said, you know, we need the ability for our workforce to explore beyond standard accepted principles and methodologies and to evolve ideas and concepts beyond simple evolution. We need revolution. So the argument's something like this. Let's just pretend for a minute that all kids come out of our current high school proficient or advanced in reading, writing, math, and science. We still know that if they came out, all of them, 100% of them, with that certificate in their hands, a proficient reading, writing, math, they still don't have the skills they need to be successful in the real world of work. Not the world that Colonel Ormer needs, or the world that COO Eric Schmidt needs out at Exquadrum. So we have to create a new workforce for the environment that you have in front of. You have a ripe opportunity with what's going on in our community, the leadership that's taking place in this community. Now, we have the infrastructure in place to do some amazing things, and we are. And so I wanted you to know that with that, we have a major event planned where this will be officially kicked off, and I need it on your radar. I'd like all of you to attend or consider attending November, Thursday, November 17th at Victor Valley College in the Performing Arts Center from 8:00 a.m. till about 11:30 or so. You'll be meeting with John Husing. He'll be presenting in front of an audience of about 450. That's as many as the PAC Center will hold. College President O'Hern will be speaking, Dr. Gary Thomas, Joseph Brady, and Craig Garrick, CEO of Aviation Assurance. They'll be speaking at what we're calling a solution summit. This will be the official kickoff. From that meeting, that'll break out in the afternoon, stakeholder groups have been identified from our faith-based communities, our service organizations, our community college as a stakeholder, different stakeholders throughout our community. We'll break out after this meeting with John Husing, go into action planning groups where I've sat down with these leaders, and they can identify a laundry list of barriers of why this goal can't be achieved. And I sit there and I say with them, well, I get that you got a long list, why we can't achieve this big goal, but let's pick one thing that we will do, one thing that we'll commit to, and then they'll be taking that and putting it into what we call the one thing action plan, where they'll work to address that barrier. And then in my conversations, I bumped into a fellow out at NASA Dryden. He's out of Palmdale. He has volunteered to lead the project management aspects of this endeavor. That's huge. This guy, if you know how NASA runs a project management, they do a pretty good job. So he'll, he'll come in and he'll orchestrate these events for us to ensure that we have some real outcomes. So I just want to thank you for your leadership. I know we've been dialoguing individually, but I wanted to put it on your radar. Thank you, Mr. Robertson, for your leadership, doing an outstanding job in the community. Appreciate that support. And Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I've got a prepared statement I'd like to read, and I'll be brief. I've been a High Desert resident for over 36 years. I know I probably don't look that old, but it's true. 26 of those years I've lived in Victorville, including the last 16 years. I have been an interested observer of politics in the High Desert for most of that time, involved at different times as staff and appointee, including five and a half years on your planning commission, and certainly as a resident and concerned citizen. I'm here this evening because I've become particularly concerned about the lack of proper decorum that I expect of the elected officials who represent me. It concerns me the way that this council has behaved the past several months, and with the digital age, your meetings have become quite the spectacle and for all the world to see and hear whether they're in the audience or not. Your actions and behavior are sending a powerful message about Victorville, but not one I think you want to send. Our city is, our city is once again in the spotlight. Just last week, a prominent economist was quoted as saying, no one wants to come to Victorville. You don't need me to tell you that we have some enormous challenges to overcome. I urge you, I encourage you, I challenge you to please focus your energy, your time, and your talents towards making our city stronger. You're stuck in a quagmire that you need to figure out how you're going to get out of it, because if you don't figure it out, the voters will decide for you. Please, for the good of our community, put aside your philosophical and political differences and find out how you will work together. Stop taking your lead from Congress. It's beginning to appear there's no effort at all to try to work together. Booker T. Washington had a quote I'd ask you to try to live up to. It goes, "You are vastly better off if you have tried to, tried something and failed than to have done nothing and succeeded." If you need help getting to the point of determining how to work together, let me know. I'll offer my services. I respect each review. I know that you all had sincere desires when you ran to represent this community, and as I've indicated, I'm a long-term resident, and I would hope that you would just somehow find a way, come together, work together. What the audience is seeing tonight, what whoever in cyberspace is seeing tonight is great. I mean, I would hope we can have this kind of, of meeting every, every night, excuse me, every time that you come together. So I would just ask you again, forget about the past. Let's look ahead and figure out what we can do as a community to address all these challenges that are out there. I don't perceive things getting better anytime sooner, so that means we have to work together. I happen to serve on the Chamber of, Victorville Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm not representing the Chamber, and I voluntarily serve on that board. And by serving on that board, I therefore represent the business community. We want our community, our businesses to survive. We want them to thrive and succeed, and we need your help in making that happen. So again, I would just ask you, urge you, encourage you to please work together, let's focus on the positives. We've got a heck of a lot of them in this community. And let's see what we can do together to make sure we're stronger and a better community.
Good morning, Mayor, and esteemed council, and citizens of the High Desert. I'm actually here to represent Randy Masaro too as well, about our money being spent foolishly on wildlife that's being killed unnecessarily as far as that goes, you know? And the fact that, you know, like, our votes isn't what you guys need to better us and all in our community, as well as our country, you know? And the fact is, you know, me being of Apache descent, I don't want to say that it really matters much because it's not about race. It's about what's right and wrong, you know? I mean, it kills me to see a dead cat or a dead dog on the road, let alone seeing a coyote or a cougar or anything that's native to this land that's been killed unnecessarily, like the bears and all that, you know? We're educated enough to know that we can do something about this, and as far as that goes, this money that we're spending foolishly, taxpayer money that could be done for other things, like you said, VA, Social Security, and everything else. When you guys all come together and, and we all agree on one thing that, hey, you know what? If we do what's right, we're going to get the vote regardless of the libertarians, Republicans, or Democrats. As long as we see you guys as doing what we need to be done for us... As long as we see you guys are doing what we need to be done for us, society, and even nature as well. Because you know what? They just killed, sensibly killed, they killed a bunch of, there's 7 billion people on this planet, and there was only 4,000 Bengal tigers that were recently, in the zoo happened, you heard about what happened in Midwest, and they just killed them sensibly. So like, there's 7 billion people, and there's only 4,000 relative, tigers to be extinct, you know? I mean, I understand the fact that, you know, if people's lives are at stake, I can understand that, you know? But the thing is that when things are being done sensibly with our money, then that poses a problem to us voters, you know? Who are we going to vote for? I mean, we care about the humane way of living our lives, and what is right and what is wrong. That's basically what it's all about. You know, I'm going to vote for the person that sees all aspects of life, you know, plant, nature, and human. That's who I'm going to vote for. I know it's hard. We have bigger agendas here, various things at hand that need to be discussed. But sometimes we can't overlook those little things, because the little things can turn into monstrous disasters, you know? And as far as educating the masses of the media, that's what we're here for and you're there for, to educate us all, to show people what is right and what is wrong. You know, when we all move up here in the high desert, I know the majority of the people here realize that there's an abundance of wildlife up here. People then realize, hey, there's coyotes walking through the street, you know? There's desert tortoises, there's rattlesnakes. They say, "Wow, we moved here, we didn't know that?" And lo and behold, now you're being surprised, you know, why? Because people actually move out of the high desert because they see the wildlife up here, you know? I mean, the fact is, you know, it's all about, hey, I will never move back down the hill. I love it up here. I go to work down there, and that's about it. I can't wait to come back up here. I love it up here. You know, people say, "Oh, you live up there." And I say, "You know what? The mornings and the evenings cannot be beat up here." You know, and as far as what you guys are doing, I mean, you guys have a heck of a task put upon you, you know? I don't envy you guys, any of you guys, what you guys do, you know? It's not a cakewalk for you guys to do what you got to do. And also, right now, Randy said that that meeting, yeah, we're meeting in the morning, but the meeting he was talking about, the roundtable November of 17th, is actually at 1:00 PM. Roundtable is going to be here in the Civic Center. So I mean, I thank you guys for your time, and you know what? Nothing's guaranteed, but I know you guys can do your best, okay? Thank you. Thank you all.
Michael Brody.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. You all know that I am an advocate for seniors here in the high desert. And something happened last Thursday that's really bothered me. Whether you like me or not, I'd like to ask all of you on the city council, Mr. Roberts and Keith, to come together and sit around the table with me to try to solve a problem that is here in the city of Victorville. Last Thursday, I attended a health fair in the city of Barstow at the Senior Center, and I met a woman that had not eaten in four days. And please forgive me, I'm trying to keep my composure. So I bought her meals at the Senior Center for two weeks, so I knew she would eat. Her name was Linda, and she didn't want me to feel sorry for her. She told me that. She was 60 years old, and I'm going to be 60 years old in a few months. And I asked her where she lived in Barstow, and she said, "At the bus station on a bench," and that she stayed warm with her beanie and her sleeping bag. And she didn't want me to feel sorry for her, that she was trying to find a job dressed the way she was. I cried all the way home that day, because I came home, I came home to a warm house, to my husband, and my daughter, and my son-in-law, and my granddaughter, and I got into a warm bed that night. And I don't have to worry about if I'm going to eat tomorrow. And I spoke to the CEO of the Barstow Senior Center that day, and he told me they have between 300 and 400 homeless seniors alone in the city of Barstow. And it bothers me. It really does. I don't know if any of you know that at the Lord's Table on Sixth and Forest in Victorville every day, they serve between 250 and 350 meals a day free off of donations to anyone. You don't have to have a reason to go in there. And a lot of those people are homeless. And my son-in-law works for San Bernardino County Fire Department, and he told me the other night, he goes, "You know what, Mom? A lot of people choose to be homeless." And I believe that. But I think a lot of people today who have lost their jobs and lost their homes, it's not a choice that they made. And I talked to a couple leaders in the community today that told me that I can't solve this problem. But what I would like to ask all of you to please do for me, the winter months are coming. It gets cold up here, and it really bothers me to think that we have seniors that don't have a place to go to stay warm, safe from 7:00 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning. People have told me, you know, there's liabilities, there's insurance, and I get all that. But the town of Apple Valley found a way to have a warming center this winter for those that will be cold. I have a great deal of respect for each and every one of you. I may have had my differences, and I do, but I think this is something that we all can say is a problem here in the city of Victorville. And it really bothers me to know that I'm going to go home tonight to a warm house, and there are people that are sleeping on benches. So I want to ask all of you to please, if we could, sit around a table and maybe find a solution for these winter months coming up, for those that are less fortunate than us. Thank you.
Okay, that is all the public comment cards I have at this time. We'll go and move into the rest of our agenda. The next agenda is the Library Board of Trustees, and we have the consent calendar.
I just need to make a comment. You know, before we get into the agenda, I would just like to say that the spice of life is a celebration of diversity, and America is diverse, and we have to recognize that. And I'm very proud to be associated with spice of life. But there's some questions that were raised regarding the funding and so on. I would request that those people that need information go check with the, either with John Gargan on the city side, because it is a city of Victorville event. It's a city of Victorville event. All the finances are handled by the city of Victorville. If you want to know about the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, my wife, Vicky Cabrealis, is the CEO. Mr. Mueller, you're welcome to go talk to her, and she'll give you all that information that you're looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Jenna, I'm number five. Under the Library Board of Trustees is a consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
There are no items under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda item number six is request to, one, approve Amendment Two to the Security Services Contract for SCLA in the amount of $158,730, and, two, approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $84,240 for extra security services to Andrews International, Inc., as may be required.
I have a question. Why don't we go out for RFP for this one?
This is Mr. Methler's item, so I'll ask him to respond to that question.
Yeah, this item hasn't gone for bid. It's been, I believe, since 2006, since it last went out for bid. So the contract that we have and the current provider we have was bid some time ago. We have been evaluating our security needs at SCLA, and we have been really debating how to properly handle and address our security-related issues at SCLA. And certainly over the last six months, it's, we've had a very diverse nature of issues that we've been dealing with out there, and we have been attempting to try to decide how appropriately to address them going forward. And one of the things that we didn't do for this purpose tonight is bid something when we don't, or we aren't exactly sure the nature of the service that we want going forward. Very directly, we are considering and have been considering internalizing the security function to be staffed by SCLA employees as opposed to what we've done in the past, which is contract out to private security companies. There's a lot of pros and cons. We certainly think there's some cost benefits of actually internalizing those services, but there's a number of risks that we're actually attempting to assess right now to decide if that's in fact the way we want to go, or if we want to contract that out independently. So because we're still going through that evaluation process, we really are trying to make a very well-informed decision and not just have it solely based upon the cheapest. We certainly have a much higher responsibility of trying to make that facility as secure as possible. So what we've got on the item or the agenda for tonight is effectively a housekeeping item where we continue on with our existing contract with them. On a monthly basis, we have the ability to terminate this contract given 60 days' notice, and we're hoping to come to conclusion as to which direction we're going to go. Presuming we do decide to go back out and contract the services out with a refined scope, we certainly will be bidding that out. But we're not quite there yet, and what we don't want to do is necessarily rush a decision without feeling that we've got all the information to make that decision.
So how much longer will it take you to come to that decision before it goes out to bid, or you make a decision of internalizing?
We're not exactly sure. At least what we have before you tonight is at least it gives us time through this fiscal year, and this contract will automatically terminate come June 30. I don't expect it to take that long, but I can't necessarily tell you it's going to be in the next 30 days either.
Just to add on to that, I recognize where we are in the evaluation of this, and I happen to agree with them. As far as in this respect, when we do begin to clearly identify the scope of that security and the infrastructure that needs to come in, I think there's some additional major expenses in that direction. We need to put that in place out there, and that's when we probably would open it up with a clearer mind for us as to what we're asking in terms of our opening bid. So sometime not too far down the line here, I'm hoping that we will go out to a bid for our security.
And just to add some color to the issue that we're dealing with, the contract that we had and that we have really had focused on providing security service to secure the airport facility, so that's effectively inside the fence line of the operations. Unfortunately, it's been the last six to nine months, we've been experiencing an extreme amount of vandalism and theft off the airport ground, and normally that would be an off-airport responsibility. It's something that Sterling had provided in their contract with us. However, as we cut their budget, that responsibility came back to us. And very recently, we've actually found vandalisms that have affected on airport assets. For example, one of the major utility vaults out there off airport got vandalized to where we actually lost telecom needs and telecommunications on the airport. So one of the things that we've been grappling with is, of course, keeping our focus and attention to securing the airport facility, but now we've had to diver, we've actually had to expand our interest in trying to also provide added security off airport that could affect the on-airport if we don't adequately address. That's kind of what we're grappling with, which is why this has taken a little bit longer than what we've been hoping, and that is to come up with a clear decision as to which direction we're headed security-wise.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
All right. Under the Redevelopment Agency, there were no items at the time of posting. Same with the Joint Powers Financing Authority. Victorville Water District, we do have consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Moving on to the city council agenda, we have the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull Item A.
Okay, we will pull Item A.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
All right, we'll now handle Item 8A.
I'd just like to point out that the attorney's fees are, again, $81,000 for this two-week period.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent, and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Jenna, Item Number Nine, under Written Communications, this is a request to approve the proposed settlement agreement and memorandum of understanding with I-15 Victorville in the amount of $843,127. I do have a card on this, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name's Dave Mueller. I'm with highdesertpolitics.org. Mayor Protem, I just want to respond to what you said. I just want to reiterate, the checks for the vendors were made payable to High Desert Community Foundation, to Hispanic Foundation. That's why I question what's going on there. On this issue, I'd like to know, when did legal counsel inform the public in open session of the details of this legal issue? Tonight. The MOU recitals say, "On or about April Fool's Day 2010, the city filed an eminent domain action in Victorville Superior Court, which was transferred to Riverside." There is no mention of the case or action in the agenda of April 6, 2010. By May 4, 2010, there might be some indication of what is going on, but like the legal counsel always does, parties are not named as it may affect the litigation. It's a good way to cover what's going on with litigation. Not until August 17, 2010, does the actual litigation show up with case numbers, so people can look for themselves. Why the delay in informing the public? By September 7, 2010, that council meeting, the case disappears again from closed session discussions. It doesn't turn up again. The settlement tonight is with an LLC not listed on the Secretary of State's website. If you look at I-15 Victorville, you won't find them. And you won't find any variant thereof of that. It turns out that I-15 Victorville, Mr. Gary Fulmer, is vice president of the company that contracted to build the Nutra products dog food plant, without smell remediation equipment installed. Fulmer is vice president of Burcher Partners. The land that he purchased in 2005 from Mr. Adams was valued then at $597,481. One year later, after the city of Victorville announced plans to build an interchange there, he purchased in 2006, and it jumped to $1.7 million in value. I call this pitching and catching. It goes on in Congress, it goes on in local, it goes in the state government, and it goes on in local government. When did, if Nutra Products was built in 2006 at the other end of the projected future interchange, when did Victorville start investing in this interchange, 2004, 2005? About the same time Mr. Fulmer bought- About the same time Mr. Fulmer bought the land where the interchange would eventually go. Somebody pitched, he carted. Why didn't Victorville buy that parcel before going public with the plan? Who brokered the land deal? If Victorville owned that land, then there would be, there wouldn't be any settlement necessary tonight, would there? Fulmer retains the parcels on both sides that bisects the land and is nearly paid for in full for the land value he originally paid for with his settlement agreement. And to me, that's outrageous. He got a sweet deal and it's pitching and catching. And those are the questions that people have about what this council's doing. And in closed session, or you should have been discussing this and said, "We need to buy all these parcels up to protect the taxpayers' interests." And I'll just bring you back to the Porter-Sign settlement with Lamar. That was a pitch and catch too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment to make on this, just to let everybody. I mean, to listen to Mr. Mueller's comments seem very reasonable and they, in fact, they are from a very surfacey point of view, but we've got so many rules that are dictated to us through the federal government, because remember, this is a federal highway, and the state system in terms of purchasing land. You're absolutely right. If we could have scoffed up all that land way back 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, any of those times, pick a time, and scoffed up and said, "We're going to do it, nail down the price of that," the local government would love it. Unfortunately, there's so many piece parcels that get held up for one reason or another through state or federal statutes. You can't purchase it until you get this agreement signed off by the federal highway authority. The minute they do that, you're good to go. That takes two or three years. In the meantime, the price, we're bidding against ourselves. Every time we secure a piece of property, another piece of property keeps climbing up. We're no control over it. You walk into a courtroom any given day and the court will defend the property owner's right to raise the price of that land because you haven't closed the deal yet. Why didn't we close the deal? Because the state and the federal government wouldn't let us do it. All of those suppositions, and the person on this council sitting back then that wouldn't have been glad to purchase the land, not only for the interchange, but out there at the airport for the power plant or anything else. But we can't do it. They just won't let us do it. We keep running into those stupid set of rules that denies us the same clear access to that property that a private sector person would have. So it's a reasonable assumption, a reasonable question, and there's a whole set of rules that prevent us from doing that. We're just closing off the last of the parcels now to finish up as we go to construction in Niskewal.
Mr. Mayor, if it please, as the council, I'd ask Mr. McGlade to come up. He can provide the exact timeframes for when the city can purchase those properties. We could have purchased those properties earlier. However, there's a lot of issues with reimbursement from the federal government that make it unattractive to do so. Mr. McGlade, please.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I was just looking up the date when we had the environmental approved for the interchange. And the rules that come from the federal authorities, the Federal Highway Administration, indicate that we may not commence either design or property acquisition before the environmental has been completed. That occurred, if you bear with me, final approval of the environmental document was August of '06. Thereafter, we have to then complete the design. At that point in time, then, we know when the, how much property we need and the exact dimensions of it. And it's only then that we can start acquisition proceedings. In February of 2007, the geometric approval drawings were approved by Caltrans. Those are the drawings, that's the geometric footprint of the interchange, which is how we write the legal descriptions for the property acquisition. So that's about when, the soonest that we can even begin acquiring property.
Thank you, Mr. McGlade. As I recall, we actually got lucky. There is one way that we can do it, and that is if the land is offered for sale. I happen to be driving, I can still remember doing this, Sean. I happened to be driving down Mariposa Road and saw a for-sale sign, the northwest corner of Niskewal and Mariposa, and I immediately called Sean to let him know to find out if we could acquire that property at that time. And we were ultimately able to, as I recall.
Northeast?
Northeast, yes, thank you, sorry. Northeast.
I remember it well, too. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Rothschild's comments. He's correct that in order to, for a public agency to acquire property, there are a whole set of rules that we must follow, the first of which is to offer fair market value for the property. And it requires that we go out and get an appraisal and share that with the property owner. So our ability to buy property at fair sale-type prices is completely inhibited unless it is offered for sale. Thank you.
Mostly when they get hint, there's going to be a freeway interchange there and there's no opportunity to buy anything anymore. Every little rat hole that you'll find out there is worth an incredible amount of money.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item number 10 is request to approve an additional appropriation for landscape maintenance contract services to be performed for drainage facility assessment district number three in West Creek in the amount of $1,800.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
I'm going to be abstaining on item number 11 as my firm does business with Cooley Construction.
Item number 11 is a request to, number one, determine that this is a sole source agreement. Number two, approve a general service provider agreement with Cooley Construction, Inc., for import soil for the La Mesa and Niskewal I-15 interchange for not to exceed a amount of $498,000. And three, to authorize the city attorney to make nonsubstantiated changes to the agreement if necessary.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent, Councilmember Kennedy. Oh, motion fails. Mayor Protem Cabralis voted yes. Councilmember Rothschild voted yes. Councilmember Vias no. Mayor McEckern absent and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item number 12 is request to award a contract to prudential overall supply for the uniforms, towels, and floor mat services for the annual contract amount of not to exceed $30,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt for a second and ask you to go ahead and step out. Again, I have a question on that last item. City Clerk, you announced the vote and it sounded like there was two yes and one no and one abstention, one absent. Can you explain just for the public and for the council how that vote works? It would appear that a majority voted in favor of it.
Councilmember Vias voted no. We have Councilmember Kennedy absent and Mayor McEckern absent. If I said abstain, that was, I'm sorry, that was incorrect. He was absent from the vote. So there were only two council members who voted.
But wouldn't it?
Two council members voted in favor, one against. And since this deals with a financial obligation to increase funding, you'd need three people to, or a majority, three people to vote for incurrence of additional funding.
Okay, thank you. I just thought it might look a little odd on the, on the printout and on the screen for the public and for the council. In a typical vote, 2-1 still passes.
That is correct.
Okay, again, I've already read the agenda item for number 12.
I have a question. On this item, it doesn't show what the budgeted amount is and what the balance is of those funds.
Correct. Normally, we include that. I don't have an answer as to why it's not. My best guess is that because there's 15 different account codes listed for a $30,000 item, the numbers are fairly small and it would be fairly lengthy. I apologize for not including that. I didn't notice this is when it came across my desk as a draft. We can certainly provide that to the council later if you choose to vote on it now. Otherwise, we could put this, set this aside for two weeks and have you vote on it at that time.
It looks like from these accounts that we're kind of scraping the bottom of the barrel to make up the $30,000. So I was a little bit concerned.
It's actually that it's appropriate to charge each of these accounts for these various items. It's floor mats, it's towels, it's just miscellaneous sort of custodial supplies. And it's not attributable to only one entity, one account code in the city. So that's why it's there. It's not because we're scraping the bottom on any accounts. We're not cobbling together money to get to $30,000. It's that $30,000 is appropriately spread across all those accounts for proper accountability.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
The only reason why I'm voting no on that item is because I would feel more comfortable having all the information at the time of the vote.
Item number 13 is request to revisit the use of e-communications during meetings. Council policy CP-11-06. I believe this was at the request of Councilmember Vias.
Yes. I would like to request that we be allowed to use iPads or laptops so that we could have backup information or if we need it readily accessible. I think the last policy stated that we couldn't have that because that had capability of email.
The current policy, you are correct, prohibits all use of e-communication. What most communities do is adopt a similar policy. The concern is that with an iPad or an iPhone, you have the ability to communicate, to the extent you're communicating during the meeting on issues unrelated to the agenda, it's probably not a problem. However, to the extent you'd be communicating on items related to the agenda, it may be deemed to be a Brown Act violation since the Brown Act requires open public deliberations and essentially if you're communicating about agenda items. So the concern is, you know, one of sort of essentially trust, use of an iPhone or an iPad obviously gives people the ability to communicate. That's why a lot of communities just have a blanket prohibition, but it's up to the choice of the council how you want to handle it. I believe, I have a computer because I use it just for the disk for the backup information. I don't communicate with it. I believe all of your monitors have complete backup availability of the entire agenda, which I think gets you to the same place. Mine, for some reason, doesn't. Totally the choice of the council.
Well, I would, my preference would be that we not have any device that you can communicate outside of the council because we should be attending to the business of the council. And I understand that you need backup information while you have it on your computer.
I don't understand what backup information.
Well, you say you need a backup information.
The backup information that.
Have all the information right there.
Yeah, well, the agenda doesn't come with all the backups sometimes. That was the issue.
Have we had IS? Do you know that you can alt-tab to the full agenda on the computer? Oh, okay, all right. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that's my point. I mean, just like the last item, it didn't have the information I needed. Or the item before that, that you wanted the backup information, I didn't have that with me.
My understanding, and Doug, correct if I'm wrong, is that the entire agenda package, the same as the hard copy, is available on the computer, maybe not.
That is correct. Just based on the discussion from the last meeting, there was other items Councilmember Vias wanted to have with her or was questioned about having with her. That type of information would not be available. There may be a way to make that available on these computers up on the DAS. These are fairly limited in their abilities for a variety of reasons. So if that's the pleasure of the council, we can look into making some kind of a drive available for additional information, if that is the preference. Entirely a council decision. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I did just check with IS. As it relates to getting backup information, we do have hard drives under the DAS and we have the ability to plug in USB drives. They are compatible with USB drives. So one thing that the council might want to consider is using that as an instrument or as a tool to bring the information, backup information, if so desired, and basically just plug that into the hard drives.
All right, so then there would be no need to revisit this, but I assume IS is going to explain to the five of us exactly how we'd go about doing that if we wanted to do so.
Yeah, we could set up a training. We can, once again, go over switching between screens on the computer. It's a little complicated. I struggle with it myself. In fact, I've asked them not to put the voting screen up on my computer because of that. But definitely add that to the, to the training so that the council can get whatever information they need.
All right, if there's nothing else on that, then we'll move forward to the council committee reports and I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
Yeah, again, my committee happens to be the air quality district, so I am compelled from time to time to talk about global warming. And I wanted to tell you something. The city has probably, over the last two years, in response to the AB-32 nonsense that the legislature's imposed on us, probably a half a million dollars in equipment that we have purchased that we could have been using today, except it didn't meet the air quality standards, artificial ones that the state imposes through the AB-32 program. That's CO2 emissions being a culpable person. Again, I mentioned this before, but it never fails to remind you folks, there is a response to AB-32. There's nothing wrong with going and protecting the environment and improving it. Alls we have to do is use the rules that we used before AB-32. Remember a BAT, B-A-T, Best Available Technology. That's what everybody used. Anything that you do, you want to do business up here in the high desert, we protect the environment by saying you set up business doing Best Available Technology. If we were using that, those trucks and equipment that we've replaced under AB-32, we would still, or at least some of them might well be still operating today in our community. Instead, we had to spend millions, hundreds of thousands of dollars of extra money. That goes throughout all the communities out here, including, by the way, building the freeway interchange again. The environmental impact issues associated with that, part of that impact is related to the global warming concept. The overzealous environmentalists out there, they have no reason except to simply put artificial barriers that have no technology or engineering behind them. That all comes out of my air quality district. We made a unique statement as an air quality board. There's about, I forget how many there are now in the state. I think there's about 27 air quality districts. This district up here comprised of 13 board members from all the communities in the high desert, including three supervisors with two abstentions, voted overwhelmingly with no abdaction to oppose AB-32. Nobody ever took note of that. All the other air quality districts, they rubber-stamped the state's edict. Here we are up here, we're punishing ourselves over and over again. The state legislature, with a wave of the hand and a pen, they could change some rules that would dramatically save millions upon millions of dollars in this state alone, in the country too, over this issue. But AB-32 has got to go. You're going to see more and more of it as we squeeze down the next two years trying to meet a budget. And they're bumping into all the rules that are artificially set up for 2020. That air quality standard, it can't be met, won't be met. But we'll still be paying a heavy price getting up to that barrier and then they'll say, "Well, okay, then we'll fudge back a bit." You shouldn't have been punishing all of us, including local government, by that way. That comes out of my Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District Committee that I serve on, and from time to time, I like to share that with you guys as well. on, and from time to time, I like to share that with you guys as well. Oh, yeah, next one, I have.
Councilmember Vias?
There was no meeting for the Victor Valley Transit Authority for last month due to lack of items for the agenda. However, the general manager did want me to remind everyone that the new facility they'll be moving into over the weekend of November 11th, and will be operational from the new facility Monday morning, November 14th, and that'll be in Hesperia.
All right. They going to hold an event to kind of kick that off, or?
No, they haven't said. I'll ask them.
All right. Interesting to know.
I have none, or we didn't have a meeting between the councils, so I'll report it. I'll report mine at the next council meeting.
Okay. The Mountain Desert Committee for, well, both Sandbag and the League of Cities met recently. At Sandbag, what they're looking at doing is widening 395 in those sections that it's still two lanes between the I-15 and into Adelanto through Adelanto. So we'll still be seeing that move forward. The realignment of 395 around Adelanto's been talked about for years, but it doesn't appear that that'll ever happen because there's no money for it. So to make that thoroughfare safer, which it is a real problem these days, we are looking at moving forward and actually widening that to a full four lanes with center lane, I believe, as well. So hopefully, you'll be seeing that kind of continue to move forward. And then, obviously, we have the full Sandbag Board meeting tomorrow. And then the California League of Cities, we just met in the city of 29 Palms. I visited it Friday, and it was a great group. I don't know if there was anything of substance to add. A lot of committee reports that no committees had met, so I don't, I don't really come back with anything that needed to be reported unless, Doug.
No, I don't, I don't recall anything that needed to be reported. No, it was just, could get together with the rest of the cities in the, in the county, or a lot of them at least, in the division, the league division, but there was no real, nothing reportable out of it. So, and Mr. Mayor, before you move on to council reports, I know it's staff and council reports rather than trying to jump in at the end, I'd prefer, when we get there, that you ask me to report first. I think it's better to have the council have the last word at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, the next item is discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Ms. Vias, did you have anything?
Yes. I would like to see if staff could give us a presentation on what we are doing for the homeless and if there's anyone hungry out there and cold that we're not taking care of, so that we know. I know she wanted to have a meeting with all of us, but I think that wouldn't be appropriate. I think it would be for staff to figure out and then bring to us. Okay, and then also, I just wanted to clarify regarding the Spice of Life. When I asked for the report, I actually wanted to know where the money was going, as far as, I was hoping that if there was a profit, instead of going into the general fund, that if it could go into Parks and Recs or another fund that, that we needed. So that's why I asked for that, didn't mean to open up everything else. And I was just maybe hoping that maybe next year, we could try to make, make a profit maybe for Parks and Recs if we, if that's possible, maybe have that goal to, so we could put some money in the pot so that we can keep the parks open. That was it.
Ms. Cabralis?
I'd just like to respond. I know there's some confusion on, it is a city event, but the monies are not city monies. They're monies that are generated through, through sponsorships, so it's not going to go back into the general fund. It's going to go back into the account that was set up for Spice of Life years ago, so we'll continue the event. It is not in the hole. We still have some outstanding revenues that are coming in, so it's not minus $15. When Mr. Gargan gives the next report and the monies come in, then you can get, you know, you can tell exactly how much money is left in that account. But it's not a, it's not an account that we can use to fund the general fund for the city of Victorville. It's the fund that's generated through sponsorships and the vendor fees, and all that money then goes to pay for the entertainment, for the, for the stages, for all those other expenses that are part of the event. I hope John can maybe put together a report, a written report, to outline exactly how all this takes place so that we can put this to rest, because apparently, this can keep going on and on forever. So I think it's important that we get a complete report, but again, it's important to know it is, it is a city event, but the monies are not city monies. It's not general fund monies. It's monies that come in from sponsorships and vendor fees.
Ms. Rocha?
Yeah, I'm going to ask, the council gave me permission to agendize the sphere of influence. I still totally believe in that, what I want to happen there, but I think the timing might be a little bit premature, so I'm asking to withdraw that from this council agenda this time. I'll tee that up again next year.
Anything else?
But I'm, yeah, I'm just asking, it would have been on tonight, except that Kennedy's not here, and I said I wanted five members listening. I still totally am convinced that we need to do that, but with all the elections and the other things going on, the supervisors' race, changing the dynamics out there, the geography of things, all of those things come in, bump them in a little bit into this sphere of influence issue. So I'd rather go ahead and just pull this off at this time, and I'll approach the council early next year about putting it back on the agenda, but, so I'm asking to bring it off now.
Okay. All right. I received a letter from our supervisor, Brad Metzl felt, which also went to the other members of VITA, requesting that we commit to $25,000 to help fund a portion of a marketing agreement that VITA had gone out on for an RFP. And basically, the reason for this is because due to the current state of where VITA's at, we can't enter into contracts, can't spend money, can't do anything because of what the state legislation that was passed and signed by the governor. So what the supervisor has proposed is that we continue to move that marketing program forward, but in this case, it would be administered by the county of San Bernardino. Each city would come up with their proportionate share. All I'm asking is that this be agendized as the supervisor has asked us to discuss it and look at approving that expenditure. So obviously, staff would have to address where the money would come from, and hopefully, Mr. Metzl can do that at the next meeting. So the council will indulge me on that. I'd like to put that on the next agenda.
I'm not going to object to agendizing and discussing. I think it's a fair discussion, especially in light of the RDAs, threat to the RDAs, which may or may not happen, but you're going to have to do some big convincing to me that it's our best interest to put our marketing out on a broader scale than the VITA, the Victor Valley area. That's something that I don't see us having an advantage to, so a good discussion, maybe I'll change my mind.
Well, and I think we'll get further clarification on that as well as to what this marketing plan will ultimately be. It's too much to drop on you here tonight, but I think the whole council needs to hear what that ultimately is going to be, so you can, you'll be able to judge once you, once you have a chance to review that, so. All right. Reports from council members and staff, and Mr. Robertson, I know you wanted to go first, so.
Yes, thank you. Actually, on that $25,000 item, Mr. Metzl felt indicated that at the Economic Enhancement Forum of the Chamber recently, so I think staff is prepared to be able to get that onto the agenda in anticipation. There is some research that's already been done on that. Also, I'm humbled by the comments of yourself, Mayor, as well as members of the community. Surprised a little bit by all of the, all the comments. And I have to agree about having a laser focus, as Dr. Marsden mentioned, and as well as Mr. Stevens mentioned. In fact, to that end, this Friday, Dr. Marsden and I are going to go to Long Beach to an event called Baldridge in Your Community Day. It brings the National Baldridge Award, which is a quality award that the Victor Elementary School District has achieved. I'm attempting to pick Dr. Marsden's brain as much as I can, because his focus with the district was on quality, and that is a large part of their success. Unfortunately, that national program may be going away and may be losing federal funding, but the California Council for Excellence is also a very similar organization for statewide excellence awards and, and growth in organizations, and they will also be at this event in Long Beach on Friday. So I'm looking forward to finding out more about it and how Victorville may be able to get involved in some of those quality excellence-type programs to improve the way we do business.
All right, thank you. I hope you'll report back to us on the event.
Absolutely.
Ms. Vias?
I don't have anything.
Yes, Mayor McEckern, as you recall, you signed the, the agreement or the proclamation with our sister city, reaffirming our sister city relationship with Cabos San Lucas, or actually, the municipality of Los Cabos. And my wife and I and two of our friends were there last week. We took a vacation. Mr. Mueller, we paid for it with our own money, on our own dime, but I did take the proclamation with me. Took both of them, one was in Spanish and one was in English, and I met with the city officials twice, two, two other days, on Monday and Tuesday, and then Tuesday, we had to formal signing ceremony by the mayor of Cabos San Lucas. And so I do have the proclamation, and we'll, I'll give it to our city clerk, and she can keep it in the files for us.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Rothschild?
Nothing.
All right, and I have nothing as well, so with that, we adjourn.